Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the 2014 Town of Shaftesbury Annual Town Meeting, Floor Meeting, to order. Want to start out with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, divisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. This is usually when I ruminate or talk about why we ought to have a moment of silence and so on and so forth. As I think about it, there's really two things that come up. One is remembering that we're still at war. We still have troops overseas. It's real easy to, in the grind, the day in and day out grind, struggling with our economy the way it is and the cold weather, it's pretty easy to forget. So I would want to ask if you could take a moment and remember our soldiers that are overseas, our troops. And I'd like to put a little PS on it, and that is, the goings-on right now over in the Ukraine, they were once a Russian republic, they were part of Russia, the USSR. Over the last decade or so, 15 years, they've had a little bit of a taste of freedom, independence. I don't know if I'd call it freedom, but independence. Now, nobody, there's no way we know which way it's going to go, but they're struggling and fighting and attempting to regain some semblance or continue on with some semblance of freedom. We come to town meetings like this all over the country, and we have the right to dispute, argue, complain about Washington, D.C., which I don't know about you guys, you folks, but I do a lot of complaining about them, both sides of the aisle. And it's protected. We can do that. Just witness what's going on over there in the Ukraine, and it reminds me that bad as we think we have it, bad as I only think we have it in this country, we're darn lucky. We've probably got the worst system in the world, except for all the rest of them. So with that, I'd ask for a moment of silence. I'd like to introduce our select board, which is a little bit lean tonight. Missing is Mitch Race. He's on a pre-planned outing. Kenny Harrington, who suffered an accident. My understanding is he's stable and looking like he's going to be recovering. So we're left with these three.
Sorry.
Don't read anything into that. We have Karen Mellinger, who is our chairperson of the board, Carl Corman, the vice chair, and Tim Scoggins, a member. All the way over there, we have Richard Bump, our recording secretary, Margie Becker. There's an empty chair. There you are. Okay. Our town administrator. And there's always Judy Stratton, I have to mention her, our town clerk, all the way in the back, making sure that we all vote the way we're supposed to and get checked in and so on and so forth. I don't know what we'd do without her. Just some housekeeping. Fire exit here. You can get through here if you need to, and out there. When you want to speak, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized by the moderator. Direct all of your questions to me. Say your name first. Direct all your questions to me. Please use the microphones. We have three microphones. Every year, I get scolded by quite a few people who are out there right now in their living rooms, watching town meeting, and it's very difficult for them to hear us when we're talking away from the microphone. So I'll wait, once I recognize you, I'll wait and give you time to go up to one of the three microphones. We will, we have recognitions and some presentations that will happen. Then when we get into the actual business of the floor meeting, I will read the article. I will ask if somebody wants to move the article. I'll ask for a second, then I'll open up the floor for discussion. You can amend an article, and you can amend an amendment to an article, and that's by, I want to amend it, say how you want it, somebody will second it, and then it's open for discussion. If somebody wants to amend the amendment with a second, you can do that. That's all. Can't go any further than that with amendments. And then we vote on it in the reverse order. If you are trying to do something or want to do something and you're not sure how to do it, please ask me. You know, we've got formalities, Robert's Rules and all that sort of stuff that we're supposed to follow. Those are guidelines, and the important thing is that the business of the meeting and your wishes get fulfilled. If there are any non-residents, I always like this, in the olden days, we used to have an area that was roped off, and anybody, there were big cones and the tape that said, you know, the police tape. And if you were a non-resident, you got to be put over in the corner. We don't do that. We've kind of graduated to a little more civilized proceeding, I think. But if you're a non-resident and you're sitting in the audience, welcome. You are not allowed to participate as far as voting or anything like that. You know who you are, the people next to you also know who you are, and they will give you a sharp elbow in the rib if you say a or nay or anything like that. That includes muttering under your breath. Okay. That's it for the housekeeping. I think what I'd like to do is start off with special recognitions. Can we do that?
Yes.
Is that the first thing on your list?
You have mine. You have my list.
Yep, it is. There you go.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. The special recognitions, honestly, we could have about 100 slides, and I don't think we would cover everybody in town that contributes in so many different ways, and we can't possibly thank all the volunteers other than saying thank you, all of you. But there are some folks that we want to give some special recognition to because their efforts have been extraordinary. And I'm starting first with the Town Garage Committee, in spite of the fact that we had a second defeat of a bond. This was a group of folks, and I do want to read them, I don't know if the names are showing for the cameras, but I just think the public ought to know. Harold Baldwin, John Enders Sr., Michael Gardner, Ken Harrington, Ron Jennings, Rick Kobick, Barry Mayer, Ron Shuf, Tim Scoggins, and Terri Stacy. They have spent hundreds of hours working for you, for us, since last March, a year ago, when we had our first defeat. And they spent so much time researching, traveling to other areas to try to refine a project and a cost estimate to bring to the folks that didn't quite get through, but I think a lot more people maybe became aware of the need. And I'm sure these will be folks that will continue to be involved as the future board goes forward, looking at a need that I think everyone, most people would acknowledge we really do need. So I thank them all, and I hope that, I'd like you all to give them a hand, frankly. The next individual we want to recognize is our own hometown Olympian. I don't know how many of you have been following the Olympics, but Andy Newell hails from Shaftesbury. He's still out there skiing somewhere across the seas. I think they're now doing World Cups again. But this kid has been in the, in three Olympics now, and, you know, he's a terrific athlete. I mean, really, one of the best Nordic skiers in the world. He's also a real model. He comes role model to children in this area. When he's home, he goes into the local schools and talks to the kids about goal-setting and how you get there with hard work. He's also, because of the love of the sport that he has, which is dependent on cold weather, he's really become a passionate spokesperson for environmental issues. So, you know, I just, I think we're lucky to have him hail from this town. He really represents us well. So, thank you very much, Andy, for all your hard work. The next group that we would like to recognize is our own Shaftesbury Road Crew. Are the guys, some of the guys here, could you stand up if you're here? We've got Dave Worthington, Ron Jennings, and Terri Stacy are here. The other names, Tim Green, Tim Gully, Roy Ware, who is, who works on our sidewalks. I need my glasses, sorry. You know, we all know what kind of a winter we've had, and these guys have been out there pretty much every day, Monday to Monday, the way the storms have been running. And my hat is really off to them. I think they've done a tremendous job. They work with, you know, frankly, the resources that we give them to work with. And this has been a real budget buster of a winter, but they do their best to try to juggle their schedules so that we can minimize overtime costs and do everything they can to save the taxpayers some money. So, you know, the other thing our guys are involved in is education. And we have one member who wasn't able to be here this evening, who actually has received, he's, he is a road scholar. Now, some of you know the road scholars as the guys that go over to Oxford and they do whatever it is they do over there. Our road scholar gets some real practical experience. They have to do many hours of classwork in mechanical repair, in road construction. And Tim Washburn has achieved the Level 1 Road Scholar Award. So, please give a hand to Steve, because it's a real accomplishment. Thank you, guys, for everything you do every day. The other, the other fellow that we want to acknowledge, and I hope that he's here, Benny Hewitt. Benny, could you, could you stand up? Now Benny has been working for the last couple of years on a project with the Veterans Committee and the cemeteries. He's raised money for gold medallions that are affixed to our veterans' headstones. And we have a great Veterans Committee that every year, they go around to all of our cemeteries and they place the flags on the stones, by the stones of our veterans. And Ben's Eagle Scout project is something that is going to make it a whole lot easier for our veterans to identify, you know, the other veterans' headstones. And it's been, he really worked all summer long placing these medallions on the stones. So, I just, I commend you, Ben, and wish you a lot of luck with this, with this project. Are you pretty much finished?
Yep.
Great. Congratulations. That's really terrific. Thanks for being here. Joe Herman, are you here? Oh, boy. He, okay, so he's weaseled out on this one. Joe Herman has been our water superintendent for 35 years now. He's been trying to retire for the last 10, I think, and we've always refused him. I think we did the same thing five years ago, and we got him an award, and he didn't leave. Really, it was to our advantage, he didn't. But he's finally said, okay, this is it, enough is enough. He has stepped down. He's still going to serve as our assistant superintendent. But Joe is one of the reasons that our water system has been long recognized as one of the best in the state. The guy is so committed to this town and to the quality of the water that's produced for the water users, and we're, we've just been so fortunate to have him. So, please, just give a hand for Joe, and I know he's watching. Just on a, on a personal note, I, this is my last meeting, actually, on the board, and I just want to say that it's been a terrific experience. It's had its challenges, as any good job does, I think. But I want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to be here, and I've just met so many wonderful folks. And also, just to get through that, Carl, I just want to recognize Carl Corman, who is another select board member who's going to be stepping down. It's been wonderful working with Carl. You know, we lost one lawyer from the board, but we had another one that we could turn to, and we turned to Carl a lot. And I really appreciate the time and the effort, and Carl is a really thoughtful guy and goes over both sides of an issue, and I really want to say thank you for all the time you've put in. And now you're going to take over.
You're not done yet. You don't get it that easy. Carl, Carl, could you come up here for a moment?
I do have a little something for you.
Thank you. I have something for you.
Look, that's pretty good. Can I drink it?
No, actually, looks can be deceiving. I just remember that. Oh, boy.
Carl, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to say, before getting into exactly what I have in my hands, many towns have, have people that are real civically oriented, and we are really blessed in this town that we have many, many people, probably more so than the average town. Maybe that's because Shaftesbury is Shaftesbury. But none that I've ever seen in my measly 64 years comes close to Karen. Anyone in this town who knows Karen doesn't need me to explain why I would say that. She has been active not only on an official level, but on a personal level with people. When someone is not feeling well, when someone needs some help, when someone is alone, Karen is there. Karen has been there for probably many of you in the audience, as she has actually for me, in terms of my being new to the community and coming and inviting me to participate, which I had not anticipated. With that said, I don't know where she finds the hours in the day to do what she does. I can't believe her husband allows her to do all that. I mean, my wife would go crazy. But the board wanted to do something to recognize all the years, not just on her service with the select board, but all her years of contributing to Shaftesbury. And I know just because she's leaving the board, you will not be stopping. I don't think that'd be possible. It'd be trying to stop your heartbeat.
Oh, I don't know.
I have, I have a granddaughter now.
She's got the heart going.
As a result, we have done the optimal that we can do, and we have passed a resolution for the select board and speaking for the citizens of Shaftesbury, and I'd like to read that resolution right now. Town of Shaftesbury Resolution. Whereas Karen Mellinger has served on the Town of Shaftesbury Select Board from 2005 to 214, serving as chair for the last year and vice chair for many years prior. And whereas, throughout her tenure, Karen Mellinger has worked selflessly to enhance the quality of life, safety, and overall well-being of all Town of Shaftesbury residents without consideration to her own time, energy, or expense. And whereas Karen Mellinger's leadership has enabled the Town of Shaftesbury to accomplish critically needed public works projects, significantly due to her efforts to procure necessary state and federal funding. And whereas Karen Mellinger's dedication to the Town of Shaftesbury extended far beyond her tenure on the select board to include countless hours devoted to community organizations, boards, and communities, committees, including but not limited to the Shaftesbury School Board, the Town Recreation Committee, Facilities and Town Garage Committees, Shaftesbury 250th Committee, Green Up Day, Shaftesbury Water Board, Sidewalk Committee, the Solid Waste Committee of Veterans, and whereas Karen Mellinger has gained a well-deserved reputation within the Town of Shaftesbury for her innate leadership skills, financial acuity, political savvy, compassion, humility, warmth, and seemingly boundless energy. Now therefore, be it resolved, that today, March 3rd, 2014, the citizens of Shaftesbury, by and through the select board, honors Karen Mellinger for her civic contributions to the Town of Shaftesbury and recognizes her as a Vermonter worthy of emulation, praise,
Wow. Wow. Thanks. I really appreciate that. It's, wow, kind of overwhelming. All right, so where are we now?
You don't want to say anything more?
Am I, I, again, it's just, I've met so many wonderful people in this town, and I'm, and I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. My husband may not come home to as many notes that say, honey, the goulash is in the refrigerator, I've got an early meeting. But I'm, yeah, I'm still around. This is, you know, this is a town that, that I love, and the people I love more than the, you know, more than anything. So, again, I just, it's, it's been a real honor for me. It really has. So now let's get down to business. Enough of that.
All right. Where are we on your list?
We are, let's see. Alice, Alice Miller.
Oh, this is something I wait for every year. It's not so I can stand here and listen to her. So I have an opportunity, when she's walking up, to remind her of just how, how she's going to hold, rivetingly hold our attention and keep us on the edge of our seat for, what, about?
Three minutes.
No, 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 no. You can have, I'll give you five minutes.
Okay, seven, you said.
Six, six.
Well, I want to take one of them and tell you how much I love Karen Mellinger. She's my friend. I admire her. I'm just, I just can't, I'm not going to say anymore. I think Carl said it so eloquently and the select board so beautifully. Karen, I love you with all my heart. Thank you so much, what you've done for us.
I feel like I've died.
Running around getting, you should have seen us running around, building sidewalks, getting money for the landfill, looking for a little, one of those things, for the Green Up Day.
Oh, the ladybugs.
Ladybugs. Just an incredible woman that you are, Karen. Hi, everybody. In the back of the room, there are two resolutions, one for Merritt Hewitt, who served in the House of Representatives and is senator for many, many years. Merritt passed away recently, and we're honoring him with this resolution. There's also a resolution for Matthew McVeigh, who's a young man at the United States Naval Academy. He had a 4.0 average, one of our own, one of our students. He's going into submarine technology. And read those resolutions. It's so, they're so impressive. And please leave me your email addresses, especially if you've changed them. A lot of things I send out are getting kicked back to me, so if you change them, please write down the new one. There's also the Doyle Poll. Please fill that out. It's very helpful, gives kind of an idea of how you're feeling about this issue and that issue. And remember, when you do your income taxes in April, be sure to check off the box that says you are a resident of the town. Requirement was discontinued for a while, but it's been reinstated for the last couple of years. So some of you have had trouble with that, please be sure to check that box. Well, we've had our times in Vermont and around this country, for that matter, through the recession, the storm Irene created havoc in Vermont for five years, and we managed to deal with our problems, and in no time at all, we fixed the problem with Irene. Vermont Health Connect is now finally functioning for the individual market. We're enrolling citizens at a per capita rate higher than the rest of the country. 33,000 people have recently enrolled. Plaisan sadly has closed down one of its businesses in Bennington, but our state employment rate still remains at a low of 4.5%, one of the lowest in the country. By the summer of 2013, the state recovered roughly 11,000 of the nearly 15,000 jobs lost during the last economic turndown, a rate of recapture of 77.9%. For the year as a whole, employers created 3,700 new jobs for a growth rate of 1.2%. Our renewable energy sector is growing significantly, with Vermont having the highest rate of jobs in the solar industry on a per capita basis. At the end of 2013, 92.4% of Vermonters had access to broadband. Many more of you now have it in our district, which is Bennington 3, which is little comfort to those who don't, but we're working very hard to get it to everyone. And guess what? Vermont ranks seventh in patents. Vermont has the highest number per capita of green goods and service jobs. Vermont is one of the top 10 states, number two as a matter of fact, on the Kaufman Index of entrepreneurial activity.
That's interesting.
In education, and I said this earlier at the, at the school board meeting, Vermont has the highest graduation rate in the country, with over 91% of our high school freshmen graduating on time. Our education financing system is the most equitable in the nation. Last year, Vermont students ranked second in the nation on the National Assessment of Educational Progress Test. Test score shows that if Vermont was its own country, our students would rank seventh in the world in academic performance. We provided access for all high school students through the Dual Enrollment Program, giving kids the ability to take courses in college while they're in high school. And we passed landmark legislation that creates universal access to publicly funded preschool for any three- or four-year-old. In transportation, we have put substantial amounts of money into transportation, improving our structurally deficient bridges and roads and creating jobs. Roads designated as in poor or very poor condition went from more than half bad to 21%. Major problems that we face are federal cuts, which we expect more of unfortunately in the next few years, rising energy costs impacting local programs, and continued international economic instability affecting exports and tourism. It's good to see you all. Call me if you need any help with Health Connect. Call me if you need any help with Health Connect or anything else for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Thanks for all of your efforts up in the north. Okay, I’m going to deviate a little bit. The Select Board has, they have a presentation, and it kind of mixes in with the reports of the town officers, so what I’d like to do right now is I’d like to actually start the formal part of our meeting, and that is done by, if you look on page 14 of your town report, that has the warning, and usually I read the warning at the beginning of the meeting unless somebody makes a motion, it’s been moved, is there a second? And that would be a motion to dispense with the actual reading of the entire warning, which as I said, it’s on page 14, 15, and 16. So the first article is to hear the reports of the town officers and take action thereon. I need a motion that we’re going to hear the reports and a second. I’ve got a motion, and I’ve got a second. Okay, Karen, would you like, or Margie, do you want to do the presentation now?
Sure.
The reports, the reports of our town officers consist of essentially two places. They’re in our town report as well as the presentation that’s being made now.
Can everyone see those, that projection pretty well? Yes? I mean, I know, it’s going to be more than what’s up there now, but I’m looking for the, is that standing out pretty well? Okay. Okay, so, your town report essentially is, a lot of those figures are showing you what our last fiscal year was like, how we ended up. And we will get into all of that, but right now, we’re in fiscal year 14, we’re budgeting for fiscal year 2015, and this report actually is through the fiscal year 13, which ended June 30th of last summer. As you can see, now there’s the, if you went back, if we had fiscal year 2012 up there, it would show a tax rate of .3231. So you can see, this next year, we are actually looking at a tax increase of almost three cents, and that’s after really at least three years of relatively stable taxes. The Select Board worked very hard over the last few years to keep it that way, and we’ll talk about what’s driving that 9.1% increase, which again is going to reflect as about three cents on the tax rate, 2.9 cents, because the amount to be raised by taxes is that top figure on the right, which is $1,423, $20,231. Now, that tax rate, you should know, is what we do, in order to come up with the tax rate, you take the grand list, and you take the amount of money that you need to raise taxes, and it’s divided by the grand list, and that also, what you pay in your tax rate also includes the amount of veterans exemptions that the town has approved, and also the exemption on the Grange, so that bumps up the tax rate just a tiny bit. So, last fiscal year, 2013, we ended with an excess of revenue over expenditures of The town had an accumulated fund balance, which is the amount by which the town assets exceed liabilities, by $390,318. Last year, the town chose to put $120,000 of that fund balance towards the budget that we’re in right now to help relieve any tax increase. Mert Snow, who is our delinquent tax collector, continues to do a terrific job, he brought in $228,186 in delinquent taxes by working closely with property owners that might have a need to, you know, to sort of extend their payment process. So he does a really good job doing that. Last year, all of our budgets, all of our departments did come in below budget goals, thanks really to a lot of hard work by the department heads, and certainly our town administrator, keeping a close eye on costs. We budget for a certain level of deductible expenses for our employees, and those expenses, actually, they did not, they only utilized about 60% of the actual amount we had budgeted, so, you know, we certainly have employees that have never abused that amount that is put towards their deductible expenses. So that was a savings to the town. We did, we have a new computer networking system over at Coal Hall, we had budgeted for that last year, and it came in significantly less than budgeted, it’s actually doing a great job. The idea was to improve efficiency between departments, it certainly has done that. We continue to see savings from energy-related projects that we have been involved in due to a grant that we received back in 2010, well, it was actually the 2009-10 year. We had done some retrofitting on our furnace over Coal Hall, we’d put a new furnace in, paid for through the grant, in our firehouse, we had some insulated panels put in on the historic windows at Coal Hall, so it’s done a great job in keeping the oil usage down for the town, so we saved money last year. Also, we’ve been going out to bid on the oil and have been getting some really good pricing, because Margie spends a lot of time on that, our town administrator. In terms of the Highway Department last year, some of the, these are some of the projects that came before us, we had a routine inspection of Bridge 35, which is down on Lower East Road, and that turned up a serious issue with the span, so we were able to get state culvert grant monies to replace that emergency deck, to do an emergency deck replacement there. Cider Mill Road, anybody that drives that road has seen a complete transformation of it. Our road crew did an unbelievable job in making that a safer travel way for folks, they realigned it, they ditched it, put guardrails in, and it’s just like night and day in terms of the safety, especially in the winter, as you travel over that road. We replaced our 2002 one-ton with a one-ton flatbed, it actually has fairly flexible use because it is a flatbed, we’re able to slide in the sander, the salter sander, and you’ve probably seen that, it’s one of those poly things that, you know, what is it, bright yellow, Terry, or, I don’t know what the color of that thing is, but seems to do a terrific job. I guess we’re synchronizing, Margie, I don’t know what that means. We also did a lot of work out on Shasbury Hollow Road, the crew installed 1,000 feet of fabric and put a foot of new gravel in there, that’s really to help correct some of the issues that we have in the springtime. They did the same type of work on West Mountain Road, and it’s gone a long way to improving some of those issues that we have during mud season. We also replaced our 1988 CAT excavator. In addition, the guys are, you know, they’re constantly doing just ongoing maintenance, replacing culverts, grading roads, brush cutting, taking down hazardous trees that are identified by the tree warden. In the Fire Department, we were able to downsize our fleet. We sold one of our fire trucks, and we got a new multi-use rescue pumper truck, and this is something that the guys can take if there is a vehicle accident, they can take it and use the extrication tools, and also just use it as a regular firefighting rig. And so that did, we did drop down in one of the numbers of fire trucks that we have. Our fire warden, Oliver Durand, had asked us to start setting aside money a few years ago, we thought he needed around $16,000 to purchase a used brush truck because the other one was getting quite old, and he actually worked with the fire company and took the old rescue truck that we had, that we didn’t need any longer, because we had this rescue pumper, and they were able to convert it into a new brush truck and save the town, I think it was somewhere around $5,000. So, thank you for those efforts, Oliver, I see you right over there. The fire company also replaced the Station 2 lighting with energy-efficient lights through a grant from Efficiency Vermont. I know that the fire company also has done work, I think they’ve completed work, I know they’d been spending some time on it, painting up in Station 2 Firehouse, which, it looks great at this point, they really do a good job keeping, maintaining these facilities for us, and a lot of that is just all volunteer work, so we do thank them for that. Other projects, the Economic Development Committee, Cindy Morris is here, Phyllis Poreo and Art Whitman, I don’t know if those two are here, but they, five years ago, they had worked very hard on getting a Village Center designation, that’s something that comes up every five years, and they went through the process again this year, and it’s very advantageous to companies in town, there are grant monies that they can apply to, and it also is very helpful when we’re applying for things like sidewalk grants, different projects in town, one of the questions that’s often asked is, do you have Village Center designation, so we thank them for the work that they did on that. Some of you may know that for years, we’ve been taking a look at our law enforcement needs, we’ve had the sheriffs in town for, since 2009, I think it is, we had the advantage of a cops grant, which allowed a subsidy of the cost of the hourly fee for having the sheriffs in town. That cops grant actually ended last November, and the board chose to continue the contract at least through the end of June, but we did not have the advantage of the subsidized rate, but the board chose to do that because we feel there is a need, and a demand frankly from the community for those services. Again, the Garage Committee worked very hard on helping to refine the whole garage, salt shed facility project, which I think will make it easier for the board, the next board going forward, and the town, as they look at how we’re going to meet the needs of that, of the garage, the town, the town garage facilities. Also, there was a school and town initiative for many, on the intersection, right out, right across the street here, we, for many years, people have come to the board and said, why can’t we get a street light, a stoplight, something at the four corners, and actually, Tim Scoggins, one of our board members, was a parent, he still is a parent, but he was just, just a parent over at the school at the time, and he said, you know, we should be able to make something happen with Montpelier. In any case, through a lot of hard work, a lot of research, a lot of materials that we presented to them, Tim and Larry Johnson, who’s here also, worked as a school official, and Margie, our town administrator, and were able to get the state to agree to drop that speed limit to 25 miles an hour. It can be an irritant initially, I think, for people, but it’s a real safety feature, I think, that we have now, it’s certainly to our benefit, and I think the sidewalk project that we’re hoping to complete this summer will be just another part of that in terms of safety enhancements for our pedestrians.
And Karen, I would, Tim, right here.
Yeah, I’m sorry, Tim.
I would just say that that irritation is only 26 seconds long.
Did you hear that?
The difference in time it takes to drive that six tenths of a mile at 25 versus 35 is 26 seconds.
There we go. And we all have an extra 26 seconds.
Sure we do.
For sure, for safety. Okay, so, a budget is an estimate of revenues and expenses. We’re looking at the fiscal year 2015, which will run from July 1st this summer, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. It is a policy document honoring existing commitments, and those commitments are debt service, contracts, taxes, insurances, salaries, benefits, and dues. And it’s based, we base our budget on previous year’s costs, we look at what were our actuals, what is it that we need to do going forward. These are some of the goals going forward, and some of the things that are funded in the budget you have in front of you in your town reports. We’re continuing, we hope to continue to plan for the new town garage facilities and Coal Hall renovations. This budget asks, actually, it’ll be tomorrow’s vote by Australian ballot, we’re recommending that the community put $75,000 into the Town Garage Reserve Fund. And, you know, we are not quite sure, I’m not quite sure what the outcome will be, but we think we need to start getting that money set aside because it has to be done. And Coal Hall, we are going forward with renovations, we have put off for a very long time, anybody that spends much time in Coal Hall can see the upstairs, the paint is horrendous, we have a bathroom, where literally the mirror has fallen off the wall, we have all kinds of issues there, and we also have an upstairs meeting space that anybody that spent any time at a summer meeting, when the sun is coming in, it’s brutal, and it’s really almost inhumane to ask our listers, our zoning administrator, all the folks that work up there, to continue to do that without some sort of ventilation and air cooling system. So we’re hoping to be able to complete some of those projects this year, and the funding for that will come out of the Coal Hall Reserve Fund. We’re looking at possibly transferring money from that fund, a fairly large amount of money from that fund, into the general fund to take care of those projects. We’re also looking at the completion of the sidewalk, I’m really happy to say. This will be the corner where the garage is, this will be with federal and state grant monies along with a local, some local match money, which we already have in hand. And we’ve also, we had applied for a supplemental grant to include some pedestrian improvements, would like to get some lighting on that corner, we’re looking at crosswalk flashers, so it’ll be a little more helpful when people are trying to get across the street. We have, whoops, did we go back, did we go forward or back? We have, whoops, did we go back, did we go forward or back?
Karen?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt you for just a minute?
Yeah, you can, yes.
You said you thought it was a ballot, it's, it's our presentation tonight, and part of the budget that we vote on.
Oh, no, wait. No, it's in a, sorry folks, technical difficulties. Go to our, go to our, the items they're going to vote on, appropriations. Okay?
Okay, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, I'll, yeah.
Okay? We just, I think it's just laid out that way too. Okay, sorry folks. Okay, so, I've lost track in here, but we have a new program in the Lister's office, which actually is, it's a parcel mapping program that allows, is this, Larry's here, so if I struggle with this, Larry, I think it's a, it's a geological information system, is that right? A geographic informational system, something like that. And it's, it's actually a pretty interesting system in terms of updating our tax maps, and what I've been told is that it is up and running to a certain extent, and they're actually beginning to pick up some pro, some parcels that had not been picked up before. So that's certainly advantageous. One of them, interestingly enough, and I did give the heads up to the water superintendent, is the, where the North Bennington Water System, the, the water plant is, up here off of Buck Hill Road. Apparently, that never got picked up. So, that's going to be an interesting development, to see how that is appraised. But that will be really advantageous, I think, to the town. And they're also planning a web, a website that people can go to and actually access those tax maps without having to come into the Lister's office, and eventually we'll be able to actually pull up our Lister, the old Lister cards, and you'll be able to see your own property, and frankly, those of your neighbors, if you want to make comparisons. So I think that will be a really helpful tool going forward. And some of the funding for that will come from our reappraisal fund. We'll be transferring some funds in for that. So some of these, you will see what looks like a really high increase in the budget line item, expense item, but, and certainly ask questions if you have them, but some of those items will be crossed with money coming in from reserve funds to help pay for that. We continue to improve, hope to improve, the town website. Again, we're looking for as much accessibility for the residents, and certainly transparency in government. We're hoping actually to have a system where folks can go on and see, for instance, what the select board packet is, has in it for the next week's meeting. So, shaftsbury.org, there's a lot of information on there, and, you know, just check it out, and if you have some suggestions, let us know. We'll continue discussions on law enforcement needs. That has been ongoing. There was a change in the way the state looked at constables, and any constables who are to be engaged in any law enforcement duties need to be certified. So we've had, there've been a lot of discussions around that, and the role of our constables in town, and what we want that role to be. So, that will be ongoing, I'm sure. Last year, we put $15,000 into the budget to help fund an emergency generator installation. Some of you might remember that the school had acquired a generator for a dollar through the, I think it was the Mount Anthony Middle School, maybe. And we had hoped to be able to fund the full amount in two years. The estimates we got were $30,000. Initially, it looked as though there was going to be some grant money last year. There wasn't. This year, the select board, with some of the other needs we had, and frankly, particularly because we're hoping that the town will support putting money aside towards the garage, we felt we couldn't put that additional $15,000 in at this time. So, we're hoping to try to identify some more grant money to perhaps get that, get that installation completed. We're also looking to repave a portion of White Creek Road. We've received a, a state grant on that, and we do have money in our paving reserve fund we're requesting to help us meet the match, because it is a 20% match, and it's looking as though the project might be, oh boy, I think, is it around $132,000, Margie? Or 160, maybe, and we're getting 132 from the state? Something, something like that, yeah. We're also looking at improvements to State Park Road. Anyone who uses Shaftsbury State Park knows what poor shape that road has been in. What we're looking to do is actually what's called reclaiming the road. We had done it up on Twitchell Hill, and it's basically going in and grinding the pavement that's there, and setting it down again to, to create a firm surface. And we have around $6,500 in the budget for that project. We continue drainage and surface improvements to Murphy Hill Road, we're hoping to. I think it's around, no, let me think, maybe it's around 1,200 feet, or 1,500 feet up on Murphy Hill Road. And I think that project is somewhere in the $12,000 range. We also are applying for state grant funds to replace a large culvert in Shaftsbury Hollow up by Hollow Hideaway. It, it's really in need of replacement. That will be probably a big expense. Our estimate is around $80,000. We will be looking at a 10% match on that. So, again, there's some money that we're asking you to put aside into a culvert reserve fund to help fund that match. So that'll be about $8,000 on our part. We're looking to replace the, the 2006 International Plow Truck. This is a truck that had been scheduled for replacement actually a year from now, but the maintenance costs on it are just killing us. So it just doesn't seem to make sense to continue to patch it even for another year. So we're asking the townspeople, we have one truck that's just come off of a lease purchase, and we're looking to just basically continue that amount of payment for this new truck. We're also asking the townspeople to set aside $40,000 to the fire truck reserve fund. We have three fire trucks, and actually, all of them are in very, very good shape. They're fairly new. We just finished the payments on a 2009. We just got a 2013, and we, and we have two that are actually the 2009, and is it a 12, oh boy, Oliver, remind me, I forget what the year of the other one is that we bought. Pardon?
Two, two, 2000.
Okay, so we own two outright, and we have another one on a lease purchase. And what we're hoping to do is begin, because we've finished off a payment on one of those, and their life is really 15 to 20 years, we're looking to begin to build up our fire truck reserve fund. So that's the $40,000 that we're requesting. The budget, we, we get appropriations requests every year, this budget from nonprofits. This budget actually reflects 100% of what those organizations ask for. Those appropriations you will vote for tomorrow, as you will vote for the reserve funds that we have recommended on tomorrow's Australian ballot. Is that it, Margie? No, here we go. Okay, so here's the number stuff. This is, this is showing you obviously the, the amount to be raised by taxes, two years, the current year, previous year, and what we're proposing. Shows you the total revenues and what we expect as total revenue next year. And, so there we go, there we, that's our comparison with the previous years. And again, setting the tax rate, we take the grand list, and you take the taxes needed, and you divide it by the grand list minus the exempt property, and it gives you the tax rate. The local adjustment has to do, again, with the, the education taxes that are absorbed for eligible veterans, I think it's 50% disabled and over, are eligible for a $40,000 reduction in their property valuation. We also absorb 846 of the education taxes on the Grange. We voted that as a community, I think, again, last year maybe for another five-year exemption period. The grand list is our current grand list, that's what we're basing next year's tax rate on. That grand list can vary from year to year. So that is to be determined. And again, this just gives you a little bit of an overview, showing you the changes in the grand list over the years, and the change in the tax rate. As you can see, for four years, that tax rate was really quite stable, and we are looking at a, just a little tad under three cents this year. And I will tell you, you could almost take two things, and one would be the, the garage, $75,000 in the garage, and our $40,000 reserve request on the fire truck reserve fund. And those two amounts together pretty much give you the increase in the budget. So this is the impact on the median home value. If the grand list, the, the median value is $208,400, which gives you a grand list of $2,084. And you can see with that projected tax rate what the, what the town tax would be. And this, again, is a, sort of a compilation of the, the years past, and what the rates, what the rate is currently, and what we're proposing, and the impact that that rate will have on various home values. So, that is that.
Okay. Very good.
Okay?
Yes, thank you very much. We're at Article One, which is to hear the reports, the town officers, and take action This is a time when I ask you if you've got any questions or corrections, anything like that, with the reports that are in here. This is also kind of a funny question. To take action thereon. We're, I'm going to ask you to vote to accept the reports. You're not approving them, you're not, you know, for instance, with the budget, you're not, by accepting the report on the budget, you're not approving it. Lon?
I, I had a question about something in the report.
Okay.
All right.
Could you go to a microphone yet, please? Thank you.
I'm Lon McClintock, and my question has to do with page 70, when it talks about the fiscal year 2013 fund balance. Now, in years past, if we had a fund balance from 2013, that would be part of the budget for 2014, or, excuse me, for 2015, because the 2014 budget would have been set the previous March. Looks like here that some money from that fund balance from 2013 has already been spent without presenting it to the town. And I'm, I'm just wondering if I'm reading this right, that, that $120,000 has already been applied to the current year's budget without it being presented to the town?
What page is that on, Lon?
70, under the operating transfers in from other accounts, it shows that they ended 2013 with $390,000. And based on past practice, that $390,000 would be used for constructing the budget for 2015. But if that wasn't, if that didn't happen, it sounds like the select board voted to reduce the tax rate based on a fund balance from the prior June 30. So I, I find this a little bit confusing, why the full $390,000 isn't available for consideration tonight for the 2015 budget.
Well, we're, we're proposing $120,000.
That's not my question.
Okay.
Because it says that there was $390,000 available as a fund balance on June 30, 2013.
Mm-hmm.
But for the 2015 budget, only $270,000 is available. So what happened to the other $120,000?
We, well, we're not finished with this current year. This is a, we applied $120,000 from last year's budget, which was, I think our fund balance last year was $320,000, or $390?
$390.
Okay. But the budget that we're in right now, we applied $120,000 of that.
How do you, how, how do you do that?
Well, when we voted on it in March last year, we applied $120,000.
Okay, so.
Wait, wait.
We, we voted on an anticipated fund balance for the current year?
Okay, wait a minute, now.
It's, typically, if we had a fund balance, you know, I just got my town report.
Okay, so may, maybe what we did, maybe this should have, maybe it's more in the way this was written, Lon.
That's my question.
Yes, I, I think, yes. Because it is this current budget, we are proposing $120,000 of that $390 be applied to the current bud, to the 2015 budget.
Okay, so then there's another $270,000 that would be held in.
We would project, we would project then, if we used all of that $120,000 in this, where we are right now, by the time we get to June 30th, there's a potential that we'd only be looking at a $270,000 fund balance. Wait a minute, am I right in saying that, Bill? Right, right?
Do you want to make a comment?
Yes.
It's not making sense, because that, the voters.
Maybe, maybe, maybe the treasurer can make more sense than me.
Hold on, hold on, whoa, whoa, go ahead, Lon.
The voters haven't said what to do with the $390 yet, so until, you know, the town has had an opportunity to decide where it goes and which budget.
Right.
It would seem that you can't count on spending that for the current fiscal year.
Bill, do you want to comment on that, treasurer?
I think there's a couple of points. One is that the.
Could you, oh, go over to the microphone, please?
The fund balance is an accumulated number, it's the, it's our equity, if you will, after we've had revenue and expenses. Last year, for the budget, for the fiscal year that we're in right now, we budgeted to spend $120,000 of our fund balance. We retained, by doing that, we retained the balance, the rest of our fund balance. That, that retained fund balance is for a purpose, its purpose is to finance operations. If we spent every nickel of our fund balance, we would start the year at the bank borrowing money to finance the operation. So what we've done is we, we anticipated spending down 120. In fact, as the projections look now, we will be pretty close to spending down that 120. We'll go into the new fiscal year, the fiscal year that's going to begin on June 1, or July 1 of 14, with probably a $250,000 fund balance, and if. And if we, our budget plays out, we will be reducing that further. We've had discussions, when you were on the board, we've had discussions about the adequate, having an adequate fund balance. And we adopted a policy, you adopted a policy, not me.
But, okay, let me just clarify. So the fund balance is the total accumulations, not the revenues in excess of expenses for a given fiscal year?
Right. It is the accumulation of all of those for all the years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Lon. Any other questions, corrections? Barry?
I don't want to make too much out of this, Barry Mayor. On page 37, delinquent taxes, under 2012 taxes. First, I want to ask a question. Does the delinquent tax collector get paid somehow by the amount of taxes he collects?
Yes, he gets a percentage.
He hit a banner year here, on the fourth one down. Nancy Bailey owed $2,654,385. Mert, you going to Hawaii or someplace? I think that must be a typo.
Yeah, I think there's a decimal point missing.
I think it probably is.
And we'd have more than $390,000 in our excess budget here.
I suspect that probably should be 2,654.
Well, we're not sure what it should be, I guess. We'll have to talk to Mert about that.
Mert?
Is he here?
Is Mert here?
I'm Merton Snol, the delinquent tax collector. I don't know where that figure came from. I think, and I didn't know, I looked at the totals to see if they agreed with what I turned over, but I didn't read every item. But I imagine that was probably $2,654.
Okay. But the totals that you had all compute the way they're supposed to?
Yeah. And just for a note, through, you take all that list above, that through 2012, as of today, there's about $15,000 of that, $88,000 still outstanding. If people didn't die and have estates and things, some of these things that you see here, the old ones, they're almost all cleaned up. The 2008, '09, and '10 are $111. 2011, the balance is 323. So these are, these are already eight months old. These are last June. I just went through today and figured out what they are as of today. So I didn't see that, that's a real typo.
Has that, has that amount been collected?
Excuse me?
Not, has that taxpayer, has that been collected? Not that amount?
It has.
Okay. So if you were to give this report today on page 38, that total at the bottom of 88,926 would be around 16,000 of outstanding taxes?
Which figure you talking about?
Page 38. See that 88,000?
The 88,000?
Yes.
Yeah, it's now just under 15,000.
Of outstanding taxes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if it was, you know, I would have liked to have collected that.
Thank you, Mert. Thank you, Barry. Yes? Tyler?
I'm Tyler Resch. I think I see it must be a typo on page 60 of the budget. Look at line 253, paving. There's some very strange typography there. Does that mean, there's virtually no budget for paving? Does that mean there's not going to be any paving ever?
What line number is that?
Line 253. See that, follow that along. Yeah. But what's, in the right column, what does that stand for?
Oh, it has no priority or budget.
Exclamation point.
So then you get that crazy little message, the D I D. So that's, that should be just ignore it.
Just ignore it. Okay.
Anyone else?
Just, if we can just clarify that, that's, Tyler, we are planning to do some paving, the White Creek, but that will, that will run through the capital, you know, a different program or project, right, Margie? I mean, that'll run through our, the Capital Project Fund?
Yes. So just one last comment on that line item, it would be just your crack sealing and pole patching and just small, minor, regular projects in the operating budget. The treasurer's helping us reorganize our major projects.
Does, does some of that paving come out of the paving reserve fund? Okay, so though it says a very small number for paving in, on that line item, if I go over and I look on page 67, line 440, talks about adding to a paving reserve fund. And is that where our paving in town gets done from?
Yes.
Okay. 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 Any other questions? Dixie?
I'd just like to make a...
Can you go to a microphone, please?
Just want to make a proposal to accept the reports from the town.
Sounds like you're saying you're ready to vote on it.
Sounds like yes.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Article Two, to determine shall the select board members each receive an annual stipend of $500? Shall the town treasurer receive an annual stipend of $16,000? Shall the town clerk receive an annual stipend of $8,000? Shall the board of auditors be paid a wage at the rate of $10 per hour? Shall the first and second constable be paid a wage at the rate of $10 per hour? Shall the board of listers be paid a wage at the rate of $10 per hour? Those proposed amounts are the same as what was passed last year, so there's no increase or decrease in any of them. It usually what we do is, and I've got a motion, is that we don't vote on these individually, that we vote on it as a single article. Is that all right? Okay, and do I have a second? Okay. Do you have any questions about Article Two, or comments, or concerns? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. It is so ordered. Article Three, shall the town authorize collection of taxes on real and personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on or before Monday, November 10, 2014, at 5:00 p.m., or likewise postmarked no later than Monday, November 10, 2014? I need a motion to that effect, please. Motion's made. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
And seconded. Any questions about that date or clarification? Oliver?
There was some discussion at the school meeting brought up about perhaps revisiting the ability of people to pay their taxes in payments throughout the year. I don't know where that would lead. I'm sure that people are free to give the town money in anticipation of what they're going to owe later on. You could come up with voluntary quarterly payments based on an estimate and then pay the final bill. I certainly am not in favor of any discounts for early payments. That used to be a question we had on the town meeting. But I think it's something that the select board might want to consider making a policy. It certainly would even out our revenues to the town and reduce some of the need to borrow. And as I say, there's probably no provision, or no prohibition in someone making a voluntary payment quarterly in anticipation of what they're going to owe. I don't know how many people do that, but they're not earning any money in savings accounts. Something to think about.
Okay, thank you, Oliver. I'm going to take that as a comment on that article, not as a motion to amend it or proposal to amend it. But it's something that does come up periodically and probably is something that our select board could revisit throughout the year.
Tom, may I comment? That has been talked about at the select board recently. And there are, we started talking about it again because I believe Dorset recently, I think, has a ballot initiative this time to collect taxes twice a year. So it's fresh on our minds. There are issues related to coordinating with the school, for example. But, yeah, we think it has merit and we are talking about it.
Yes, Mert?
Is this in the area of installments we're talking?
Yes. That's what it sounds like, yes.
We've talked about this before. And I've always been on the other side, I think, because reading the way you have to collect, if you have an installment, you cannot charge interest. You can't try to really collect it until the second installment goes. You're not delinquent until you miss the second installment. And I've always said, it's hard enough to collect something that's two or three months old. If it's a year old before you even get it, you've really got a tough job. That's something that should be considered.
Okay, thank you, Mert. We're a little far afield from the article, but thank you for the comments. Any other questions or concerns or comments about the date for collecting taxes being Monday, November 10, at 5:00 p.m., or postmarked no later than Monday, November 10, 2014? Any other questions or concerns? You ready? Yes?
Tom, I think we go through this almost every year and you tell me it's not germane, but I'd make a motion to amend the date to coincide with town meeting day in an effort to encourage a greater participation in citizen democracy.
You go ahead and tell me it's not germane. We do it almost every year. I think if people's taxes were due today, it'd be standing remotely.
Michael, it's not germane. However, however, I'm not saying that it's not a valid concern or a valid suggestion, something that the select board, when they revisit our collections, the date and everything, they should take that into consideration, I would hope. And I'd hope you'd be available to remind them of it. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article Four, shall the select board be authorized to borrow money from time to time as needed in anticipation of taxes? I need, motion's been made. Do I have a second? And seconded. Any questions about that or discussion? You ready to vote? All those in favor of authorizing the select board to borrow money from time to time as needed in anticipation of taxes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article Five, this is our budget article. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,165,000 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2015? The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenue, revenues and reserve funds. Motion's been made. Do I have a second? And I have a second. Questions or discussion about the budget? Michael?
I have a question, and I don't know if I should have asked it earlier, but I thought I'd wait till we're actually in the budget article.
Now's right time.
As a percentage of town revenues, it seems like in the last few years, we've taken on an extraordinary amount of lease purchase finance agreements in order to buy new equipment to the tune of 600-plus thousand. And it sounds like we anticipate continuing that program. Is there a point in this rising interest rate environment where the board would deem it more fiscally responsible to begin aggressively budgeting for reserve funds rather than financing equipment?
That's one of the reasons we're requesting $40,000 in the fire truck reserve fund. The interest rates have been so low. In fact, we're looking at one more purchase of a truck. We've actually been replacing a good bit of equipment. And I think that it's certainly something we've discussed, Michael, as we look at interest rates that begin to edge up a bit. You know, whether it makes sense to go out to the community and ask for more money in the reserve funds. It's kind of that balance. And because the interest rates were so low for such a long time, and still are relatively low, it was an attractive way for us to get the equipment we needed after not having invested in equipment for a while. So, yes, I mean, I would say the answer is yes. It's certainly be, the board is very aware of interest rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Other questions or comments? Or concerns? Barry?
I have a question of what this means. We vote on this issue now. And this is the budget, basically, that the town will spend in the next year. Suppose, starting on page 15, some of these appropriations go down tomorrow in the ballots. Will that, will that change this number?
Yes.
Yes, it will. And could I, I want to clarify that what he's asking, if you look in the budget on page, the bottom of page 66, line 432, all the way down through to line 447, those are part of the proposed budget. And it's a little bit funky, because we're going to vote on the proposed budget, the $2 million budget. Those items right there are going to be voted on tomorrow by ballot. As well as, if you go on page 66, if you look up, you see John G. McCullough Library, and run that all the way down through to W B T N, lines 406 to 424, there's a total of $60,000, which is in the $2 million budget. But we're going to vote on those items specifically by ballot tomorrow. Between that, those items is $60,000, and then the request for the reserve funds is $182,000, which potentially, if not approved tomorrow, would actually reduce the budget.
That total amount is $242,910 that we're asking the full community to vote on by Australian ballot tomorrow. And if any of those are not approved, then those monies are not spent. They're not in the budget. Lon? Oh, I'm sorry.
Lon, go ahead, Lon.
I just want to clarify one point, though, and...
Can you go to, can you get to the microphone, please?
In years past, when we have set the tax rate, the select board did it based on the amount to be raised by taxes, not on the total approved expenditures. And the select board still would have the authority, even if an article went down, to still set the tax rate based on the amount that the voters have approved spending. So it's not a certainty that if an article goes down, the tax rate is going to go down commensurately. That's a select board decision.
No comments?
Well, I only know that in the past, the select board, as long as I've been on it and Lawn was on it, we took the budget that we got, and, you know, we actually had to go back to the people and tell them how we handled that budget. So, you know, I would imagine that this future board would probably do the same thing. Yeah.
Other questions or concerns? Michael.
I'll keep going as long as nobody else has questions, but this is a question for the board, actually, regarding the appropriations. I think this year was very beneficial to see some organizations include the number of people they serve in the town of Shasbury, because it makes it really easy to say, oh, wow, you know, they're only asking for $500 or $1,000, and they serve 200 or 300 people. But other organizations, like we, doesn't really mention, like for the McCullough Library in North Bennington, we have no idea how many residents of Shasbury they serve. Is there any way that we could make that or provide some continuity in the reporting so that it's easier for us as taxpayers to see kind of what the proverbial bang for the buck is for these appropriation requests?
Do you want to address that, Karen?
I think, is Bob Holmes here?
Yeah, he was.
He was. He's one of our auditors. And actually, they are very diligent in trying to work with these community organizations in terms of the request for information. We do always ask them how many residents are served. That's part of their application process that comes before the select board. So that is information that the board gets, and it is one of the first questions that's asked. Now, whether they all put the exact numbers in the town report, I have to admit that I haven't read every single one of them, but that's something that the auditors have worked hard on over the years.
If I might also add that when it comes into us, if they have not provided that information, and we go back and ask them for that information to find out exactly how many people they serve, and for whatever reason, we don't get an adequate answer or we get no answer, it's really left up to the select board to decide whether or not we're going to recommend it to be voted on or not. And generally speaking, if we know the organization, we know that they provide some service, but we can't be exact, we're rather reluctant to vote them down simply because perhaps they are made up of volunteers and haven't gotten their act together in a sufficient amount of time. But that's up to you to decide whether or not that's enough for you to vote yea or nay on the request because they couldn't perhaps get their act together in time.
Does that help?
Other questions, concerns, comments? Michael.
I have one more. It's my last one, I promise. The town of Shasbury has made considerable strides in improving the town report, in improving the balance sheet, and making this thing much easier to read. The town of Danby has two issues on their ballot this week that are extremely contentious in that they've made a lot of the same efforts, but they are eliminating all, or I should say, they are now reporting all of the fees that flow through to the town through various positions, and they have then taken some of the folks that used to collect those fees and put them on straight salary in order to provide greater transparency. As our town report exists now, I mean, we're currently paying FICA and social security taxes on the positions that don't have any actual amounts budgeted for payroll, which, from the outside looking in, is incredibly confusing. In an effort to clarify things, is that something that the town of Shasbury has looked at? Perhaps this is a question for the treasurer and the select board.
Bill, you want to address that?
Michael's absolutely.
Microphone, please.
I thought I was a loudmouth. Mike's absolutely correct, Michael. The town report does not reflect the delinquent tax collector's fees. One could determine how much they are by, if you know, the social security rate, the FICA rate, any dollar amount, you could calculate how much the fees are. Likewise, part of the town clerk's compensation is through fees that she earns and collects and keeps, and that also could be calculated as well. It's been the practice of the town. It's not, I'm not positive with respect to the law, with respect to the town clerk. You know, I would say with respect to the delinquent tax collector, I'd let Merk talk to that, but I understand there are other methods of compensating the delinquent tax collector, such as putting them on a salary, such as deciding that they get a salary and a commission. There's different approaches to compensating them. If you're curious as to how much we're paying and what, you know, that number is helpful to deciding whether we should continue this way or go on in another direction. But I don't know. I think this is practice. It's been a practice for a long time. I think individuals in this town get a lot of value from the town clerk and the delinquent tax collector. You can decide whether their compensation is fair or not. I know you're astute enough to do the calculation. I think it's a question, it's a fair question to ask, but I can't tell you right or wrong. And I have not had specific discussions about this with any member of the, other than the select board.
Could we report it simply as a revenue in, revenue out item, just for transparency?
Lawn, do you want to address that? Go ahead.
Yeah. A couple of years ago, we researched that. Some fees are collected by town officials as a matter of statute. So it's not money within the control of the select board or part of the town budget. It's basically a, for example, the delinquent tax collector is allowed to keep the 8% penalty as the delinquent taxes are collected. To change to some other system would be first to go outside the statute and then to, second, have the delinquent tax collector agree that he would prefer a salary to the penalty. So that's a system that was set up decades ago that is completely without, outside the town's control and is within the state legislature's control. It's very similar with the town court. They're entitled to certain fees by statute. The idea was that the more licenses and other things that they sell, they get a piece of that as a way of encouraging them to be good at selling licenses and other things that allow fees to the state. In order for us to change from the system we have right now, we have to negotiate an independent agreement with a separately elected public official to change their compensation rate. It's not something the select board can impose because this compensation system was established by legislature and is written in state law.
Is there an audit mechanism to make sure that we are maintaining our proper responsibilities for FICA and social security taxes?
My feeling has been that they, those numbers have always been accurately reported to the town because there's a risk for the town and the individual who's collecting those fees to have to report them accurately, so.
Where would I find that in the town report, if it's being reported to the town?
The FICA taxes we pay and the like?
No. Where would I find the revenue figure that we use to calculate our tax liability?
I don't, I know that the town court files a report, and we get a financial statement as to what the tax is, and we pay it accordingly. But I can't answer your specific question. I've been out of the loop about a year, but I could answer your question about the structure and whether or not we have discretion as a town to change that.
So when you say "we receive," do you mean Mr. Moderator? When Lawn says "we receive," does he mean the select board receives? Because, I mean, the taxpayers don't.
No. The bills are cycled, and the treasurer can tell you the process of where the numbers are presented, and the select board ultimately has to sign a warning.
Warrant. Warrant.
Warrant. Excuse me, not a warrant, a warrant to make sure that the payment is paid.
I want to ask Bill if you could address that most recent question. Please.
The officials that are compensated with fees, or in the case of the delinquent tax collector, the penalty, report their earnings to the administration so that they are included in the payroll system. It's fairly easy to reconcile with the delinquent tax collector because we have a check and balance in that when I turn taxes over as they go delinquent, I know the amount of the receivable, and I expect to get that back. The delinquent tax collector has to collect that and the statutory interest. So there is a mechanism. It's also audited by the elected auditors. And Bob Holmes isn't here, so I can say this. I really have a lot of respect for Bob Holmes. I think as a, as a, an elected auditor, he's very conscientious. He works really hard. I've gone to state-level programs with him for education. I think he really cares about it. Lisa Lent and Mike Caslin work hard with him. They're a pretty good team, and I have a lot more respect for elected auditors since I've worked with these people than I used to have in my past life. Ditto with the town clerk. She has a responsibility to report her fees, and, you know, I can't say, you know, that, and I know the auditors look at her revenues as well. So, I mean, that's the best I can tell you, Michael. If, you know, you and I are big enough to know that if somebody really wants to do something, they can do it.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I just want to make sure we have checks and balances in place.
Yes, we do.
To prevent us from assuming any liability from a tax perspective.
Right. We pay all the FICA taxes that we're supposed to pay on anything that's reported to us, and that's reconciled regularly. I do, I do think, I'm not sure I agree with Lawn on whether or not we can compensate the tax collector differently, because I know the League of Cities and Towns has a different approach as to compensating them, but that's an argument for another day or discussion for another day, anyway.
Tyler.
Move the question.
Okay. Most been made to move the question. Is there a second? What that means essentially is to cut off debate and then go to the main question. We're going to vote right now as to whether or not we're going to cut off debate. We're not voting on the budget, the main article. We're voting on the motion to cease debate and go to the main article. All those in favor of, excuse me, all those in favor of ceasing debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The ayes have it. The main article, shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,1165 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2015? The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The ayes have it. It is so ordered. Article six, to transact any other non-binding business as legally may come before said meeting at this time. I think that select board has got some more information on tomorrow's ballot articles, so I guess I'd call on, Tim?
Yes. I'm Tim Scoggins, recently elected to the board, and Karen thought it would be a good idea for me to stand up here because she thought I needed to practice. What I'm going to do is talk about the Australian ballot articles that you're going to see tomorrow on your ballot and give you some information about those. And in background, do we need lights off to see that? Nope, it seem like they're okay. In background, we'll talk about, some of you may be asking the question, why we're voting on these. We've got two zoning bylaws changes that we're going to talk about, and one procedural change in why, in the way that we handle zoning bylaws. We have a ballot article that addresses the constable. We, Karen indicated, we've had discussions about the constable. The only thing that's really come about, come out of that is a recommendation to go from a one-year to a two-year term. So the first zoning bylaw to come up is a new section 7.13, solid waste management facilities, industrial composting facilities, for the purpose of regulating and permitting industrial compost facilities in industrial one and industrial two zones as a conditional use. The full text of that zoning bylaw change was available on the table out front if you want to read the whole thing. In addition to restricting industrial composting activities to our industrial one and industrial two zones, it regulates the operation of industrial compost activity in terms of lot size and traffic and operations, et cetera. It moves the town toward alignment with recent state regulations on commercial composting activities, and it does not affect your backyard compost pile if it's less than 100 cubic feet.
Yards.
Yards. Yards. Yards. The second zoning bylaw that's coming up for, on the ballot tomorrow, concerns flood hazard areas, revisions to section 7.15 flood hazard area regulations. This is, and I'm kind of quoting here because I was not in on the whole process here, but according to planning commission members, we're talking about relatively small changes to the flood map, and that flood map is in the back if you want to look at particular about what was the flood zone and what is now the flood zone. These changes are mandated by FEMA, and it's important that we accept these changes and put them into our bylaws and build in flood zones according to the way FEMA wants us to because for businesses, residents in the flood zone to get national flood insurance, our zoning bylaws have to conform with FEMA regulations. And if we don't get national flood insurance, those people will be paying a whole lot for, a whole lot more for private flood insurance. And it also affects our ability to, it could affect our ability to get aid from FEMA should there be a catastrophic flood like Irene, and we were, and we're not in line with those So the third one is a procedural change, and we're asking the town to allow zoning bylaws changes by majority vote of the select board as opposed to the way it's done now by townwide vote. And there's, the background there is, it's kind of depends on how big the town is. As a rule, this rural town versus urban town, if your population is less than 2,500, you're generally considered rural town, and rural towns adopt zoning bylaw changes by townwide vote. If you're bigger than 5,000, the idea is that things are more complex, and it's hard for citizens to keep up with all the technical details involved in zoning bylaw changes, and zoning bylaws are adopted by the select board. Shasbury, with a population of 3,600, is in between. We could do it either way. We have done it one way or another in our history. The select board believes that at this time, we're better served by allowing the select board to approve zoning bylaw changes. The reasons are that these zoning bylaw changes can be, we'll get to questions at the end if you don't mind, can be complex and technical, and they can have significant consequences. As I was just indicating, the article 1B above about changing the flood hazard map, there's, you know, you've got to understand things like fluvial, sorry, fluvial erosion hazard zones and know where they are and map them correctly. And this could, you know, failure to adopt this and do it right could affect, as I said, national flood insurance and FEMA aid. Stop or close? And as a reminder, essentially, zoning bylaws adopted by the select board are only after all the hearings that the planning commission goes through, all the hearings that the select board goes through, and the voters still have the final say. If the select board makes a decision that the voters don't like, they can petition rescind any bylaw changes that we make. It's really about efficient governing is what, is the way we see it. One other one on the constable, shall the voters of Shasbury, of the town of Shasbury, change the term of the first and second constable from one-year terms to two-year terms in accordance with Vermont statute, 17 VSA section 2646.7? And really, this is And really, this is just to enhance the continuity of the office of constable. We feel like it, it makes more sense to elect a constable every two years instead of every one year. As Karen suggested, these, this proposal came out of discussions that we have had about the constable and his role and whether or not he's, should be allowed to have law enforcement powers and how those are certified by the state. The select board remains undecided on that whole issue, but we felt like the issue of a two-year term made sense just in terms of continuity. Did we skip one?
It was a background. I think you'd already covered it.
It was more background and how we got to where we are with the procedural deficiency.
Yeah, is that, can we bring that up? Yeah, can we bring that up? Because I think that's worth being, because some people may remember the, the first two zoning bylaws as having already been approved by the select board, and that did happen, and that did happen by mistake. In researching how to do the election and the ballot articles properly, our town administrator and our town clerk were going back through the historical records of the town, and they discovered that in 1987, town of Shasbury voted to be a rural town for the purpose of adopting bylaws, and that requires a townwide vote. Somewhere along the line, that process got sidetracked. We believe it happened when we had a period of a lot of turnovers at Cole Hall in terms of the zoning administrator and other administrators, and the institutional memory just got lost, and we reverted to allowing the select board to approve zoning law changes. When we found out about that, we consulted attorney on what we ought to do, that we found this, this problem. He, he advised us that this is a procedural defect. We adopted zoning bylaws by the wrong procedure. There is in the state a two-year statute of limitations on zoning, on procedural defect problems. And so we look back, and in the last two years, the only two articles, two zoning bylaws that were passed were the two that I mentioned before. And so we are putting those before the voters tomorrow to be approved, to correct that procedural defect. We are also asking the voters to allow us to do it the way we've been doing it for the last several years incorrectly, because we believe it just is appropriate for Shasbury at this time, as I said, given that there is lots of public input. And again, the voters have the final say. If they don't like what the select board decides in terms, in terms of zoning bylaws, it can be petitioned and rescinded.
Ready for questions?
Questions?
Oliver. Yes. Can you come to a microphone, please?
I'd kind of like to express my opinion on allowing the procedural change on, on adopting zoning amendments and stuff. I think we, yes, we need the hearings, both at the board level and at the select board level, but I still would like to retain us as a rural town in the sense that the entire town populace gets to vote on whether we adopt a change or a new regulation. I don't see too many of them coming through as an emergency thing, so that a vote can wait for a regularly scheduled town meeting or November election, something where you wouldn't have to schedule a special vote for them. And I would personally like to keep us in the small-town sense that everybody gets a vote on things. Yes, you're going to still have to have your hearings and explanations and all that, but everybody gets a vote rather than our representatives doing the vote. And I guess there's, you can come down either way on this issue, but I, I personally feel that we should retain the ability for everybody to have a say in it directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Oliver.
My name's Ed Conley. I live on Harvest Hills. We moved out of New York State three and a half years ago, partly because too many of the local politicians were fixing things that weren't broken and doing things for our own good. You know, the system we have here where there's public, public hearings to the select board and discussion overall, I think is highly preferable. Once you put, I'm not talking against our current crop of fearless leaders, but once you put that much power into a board, they also have the freedom to ignore all of the public comments, and the subsequent petition and recall basically forces us to have two votes. One, the informal one to pull the petition through, and then the vote itself. So I'm in favor of maintaining what we have and allowing the public to vote on the voting changes, the zoning changes. Excuse me.
Thank you. Some other comments? Or questions about what they are? Yes?
You said it was 100 cubic yards?
Yes.
Does that apply to a farm?
No, farms are exempt. Agriculture is exempt.
Michael?
I, I guess I would agree with everyone else that stood up in just saying I think that it's important. Shasbury voters retain the ability to control their own zoning destiny. Changes in zoning can have a significant impact on where commercial development occurs, property values, all large issues that everybody in the town, I think, needs to actually vote on. You know, I think one of the other issues here is, as a gentleman originally from New York and now from Shasbury mentioned, it does put a lot of power in a given board at any given point in time, and we can't always be assured that we're going to have the representation that we all want at any given point in time. So I would encourage everyone to keep our rural designation. And I, I think I would also add as a comment that I think not having the rural versus urban designation wording on the ballot article does a disservice to the people of Shasbury in making this determination.
Some other comments?
Hi, my name's Mike Foley, and I guess I was just going to say I'm against the last three comments. I think a lot of that comes from sort of what I've been hearing as suspicion in a board, and suspicion in boards in general. And just earlier, Michael Gardner said he wishes more people were here, and I also wish that a lot of the meetings I've been attending, where the Shasbury, our residents and the neighbors that are working on these boards would also appreciate more attendance. And it seems as though the process, which is open, completely open from the get-go, right at the planning board level, is very, illy, is, is not very well-attended. And the work that's being done on the state level from a lot of our volunteer board members isn't really going to good use. They spend a lot of their own time going to state, going to different locations to investigate things. A lot of that information is never really passed on to the voters. And actually, a lot of times, you get a lot of, sort of, almost the letters I've been reading in the banner about suspicion about boards when none of the people writing the letters, I haven't seen those people at, at board meetings. So I'm new here, and I'd say I give these boards a lot more credit than some people here do, because the majority of what they do is, quite honestly, boring. It's, it's a lot of work, and they do a lot of research, and a lot of the words that what just Tim's just said, there's a lot of particulars on these bylaws that are not very well-understood, unfortunately, and it, you know, I don't know what else to say other than people's arguments tonight were also saying there's just not enough town participation. And for someone to write a letter to the banner at the last minute to say, oh, you should be afraid of your property rights, that's a year and a half of the board's work. These are, these are our family members, neighbors, and volunteers on these boards that have done all this work just to have it all thrown out, unfortunately, because of lack of turnout at these board meetings. And I'm new here, and I, I've written a letter to the banner years ago saying I can't believe there's such a lack of turnout at these board meetings. And actually, I haven't seen Mike Gardner at one of the composting meetings, so I'm, I'm confused. I really don't get it. I know you've, well, I've got three kids.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It doesn't matter to me how many kids you have. He's out of, well, I have the microphone.
No, wait a minute. Let's keep it away from a personal level. No names, please.
Fine. Well, there are some people here tonight who've made a point of saying that they want the right to vote. Well, they should also exercise the right to show up at these meetings and take advantage of it. There's lots of excuses out there for not doing things, and we all have responsibilities, but the people on these boards have volunteered a lot of their time and a lot of their efforts, and they've also taken the resources of other people they've trying to get information from at the state level to, you know, get these bylaws in order. And I don't feel it's right for at the last minute to say, well, I don't like it because I can't vote. Well, you can vote every week. You go to these meetings, and that's your vote. You show up and you say it, and you come informed. That's part of the cost. You can't just show up at the last minute, oh, I don't like the way it sounds. Well, where were you? And that's what I, that's what I'm hearing here today.
Thank you. There was a young lady over at the end of the row that had a question or a comment.
I thought you forgot about me. Hi, my name's Megan Donkers, and I'm currently the chair of the Development Review Board, but I'm going to speak on behalf as a, I guess, as a member of the public, because I'm not sure legally what I can and cannot say. I think that, living in the bylaws for the past couple of years, I think that, I don't think the whole town should vote. I kind of echo what Mike Foley said. There's a lot of people on the planning commission, and there's a lot of people, you know, on the Development Review Board, and we try to, we try to enforce the bylaws that are, are set forth, but the truth is, the bylaws are going to need a major revision. They're great for now, but there's a lot of improvement coming, and I just feel that it would do a disservice to the community to put every zoning bylaw before public vote. So as, as a member of a board and a community member, I would appreciate it if you would let it up to the boards. One of the reasons that I chose to get more active in the town and participate was because of all these things and people saying this and that, so I thought I'd go and, and hear it from the source and hear it from the people that, that have something to say. So that's all I have. It's my opinion.
Thank you, Megan. Lon?
Just want to clarify, the, the planning commission drafts a bylaw and then sends it to the select board, who can choose to adopt it as-is, or if the select board wants major changes, they have to send it back to the planning commission. The select board's not free to draft bylaws out of whole cloth. There's a check and balance in this process. And one of the problems with these bylaws today is they're becoming more and more complicated because businesses are becoming more and more complicated, and our community seems to be shrinking, our open land is shrinking. We could become a lot of, less than 10-acre lots or 1-acre lots if we allowed the town to do that. And so these complicated issues have a lot of technical details. And so if a bylaw goes down, why did it go down? Was it because the setback was 500 feet, not 100 feet? Was it because a use was allowed in one neighborhood and not another neighborhood? What message, when the entire town votes on a bylaw up or down, is the planning commission and the select board going to take from that? Is it that the town generally wants a bylaw of some sort, but the town has no consensus as to what the detail should be? I think it's gotten so complicated that at this point, when you have a public process that involves an independent planning commission drafting it, holding public hearings, doing it all in public, and then presenting it to a select board in public hearing for another independent decision-making body to try to put together something that makes sense for the towns, you have a check and balance there. You have two bodies making compromises to make it work in the best interest of the town. And so at this point, I think leaving these kind of issues to a town vote basically makes it very difficult for the town to adapt to changing circumstances, like the fact that we had no bylaw whatsoever for solid waste management. That took a couple of years to work that issue out. And then the, the industrial composting in this community, there wasn't a lot of compromise and a lot of hard work that went into that. And I think we should trust our two independent boards to make those decisions, because it's a very open and public process.
One of the things that I'm hearing here seems to be really based around one factor, and that is fear. And unfortunately, in our political process in recent years, at least I've found, that often things happen because one side or another is able to say, be afraid. Be very, very afraid. And if you're afraid of whoever's going to be sitting in my seat, and I might be afraid too, I'm just no different than anybody out there, let me make this other suggestion on the other side of the coin. There's another thing to be afraid of. You can be afraid of your boards because they're not going to live up to whatever perhaps you think is right. But if you have an economic situation that requires an approval of a zoning matter, wouldn't you, and it's going to possibly affect you personally, would you rather deal with a board that meets regularly, whom you can address, and hearings where you can go to, and make your case to a limited number of people? Or do you want to make your case that may be very important to your family because you have property that has just been bequested to you, or because you have a business decision that you need to address with regard to planning? Do you want to go out and make that whole argument to the whole town and convince the whole town about the nuances of that? If I're in that position, I'm not saying which way you should go, but I would suggest if you're afraid of the boards not carrying out what you think is right, I think there's that counterargument, you can be just as afraid that you aren't going to necessarily going to be able to convince the whole town about whatever it is that you want. And in that regard, I would suggest for every one of us, it would be a whole lot easier dealing with an organized entity where you can come, you know where they are, you know who they are, you know how many people you have to deal with. You generally know what their thoughts are because they'll probably make them public at a public hearing, and deal with it in a professional way as opposed to a political
Some other comments? Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Pennebaker. I have been a member of the planning commission since I think about 2004. And although I have a great deal of sympathy with the notion that this is a rural town and we should have a rural vote, I also know how complex these bylaws can be. And in the flood hazard bylaw in particular that's coming up for ballot, if that is defeated, the town will be enormously poorer for it. It's, it's a question of the, well. It's, it's, it's a, it's a problem with the complexity of the bylaws. And in this particular case, the flood hazard bylaw was written mostly by the state, and we corrected a few misimpressions that they had about the town. But basically, no matter what happens, if that bylaw goes down, you're going to get another proposal that'll look exactly the same. And if you turn it down, people who live in the flood hazard zone will not be able to get insurance from the government, which means they'll lose any subsidized insurance that they have. And also, the town will be unable to collect all of the benefits they should get from state aid. So it would be an enormous loss to the town to lose that bylaw. In the case of the composting bylaw, it's, it's a similar situation. If the composting bylaw goes down, there will be no constraints on where composting develops in the town. in the town. And we've already been through this once before with hearings on the bylaw, and frankly, if there are no constraints, you don't know what's going to happen in the property next to you. It's something to consider. We passed a bylaw that we thought would basically eliminate that risk by providing protections for residential zones. If you turn it down, there won't be any protections.
Thank you, Bill. Other comments?
Tom, I just wanted to make a comment.
Karen, yes.
I wanted to make reference to something that Michael had said regarding the wording of the article, I think, and suggesting that we should have had some sort of explanation about the rural, the size. And I just want to point out that we really were constrained in terms of the language that we could actually put in the, on the ballot, in terms of the article. We are prohibited from putting any kind of notations, any sort of, we wanted to put an explanation in there, we wanted to describe the 20, which is something that was done in 1987, when the town switched from the process we're talking about now, where it stopped at a select board level unless the town, unless folks petitioned. And it was in 87 when they took this vote to go to the rural bylaw process. At that time, and we have the actual ballot, the town was able to put an explanation in there. We wanted to do the same thing, and we were told absolutely not. Legally, you cannot do that, and it would be the same thing going forward with bylaws. I mean, you see the way we've placed these bylaws in here. There would be no explanations for voters, nothing to help them understand if they had not been attending public meetings. And that's, frankly, that's difficult. I mean, it gets back to what Michael Foley had been talking about. When you go to a planning commission meeting, there's no one in the audience. There's nobody there. Nobody cares about this stuff until somebody might happen to say something at the very end, at the 11th or 12th hour. And even then, when that happens, frankly, I have seen the planning commission completely rewrite bylaw language. I've seen the select board send it back to the planning commission when we do have people come to us. You can only have good bylaws when people are spending the time on it, and unless the community is willing to get involved in these public hearings, to truly understand the intricacies of a lot of these bylaws, you know, they're not going to know what they're voting on unless they access the information. Now, in the current budget, we have more money for our website. Maybe people will go on the website and access it that way. I like to believe that. And folks will vote however they want to tomorrow in terms of the process, and the select board will deal with it, you know, how they've been dealing with it for decades, how the towns, however the townspeople decide they want it. But I guess I'm just cautioning townspeople who want to be, feel as though they want that vote, because they want to know that they're involved in the future of their town, then spend the time upfront to find out what it's all about, and what you're voting on, what that really means, because we actually can't explain it to you in, on one of these ballot articles anymore. They won't let us do it, so.
And also, they wouldn't allow us to have a separate sheet that would explain it.
Other comments? Questions, concerns? Are you all just staying here because it's too cold out? Yes.
I've gone to a few meetings, and one was to support someone who wanted to buy the property next door to us to do a home business, and there wasn't enough people in the planning commission to do it, to take a vote on him. The guy drove eight hours and had to turn around and go back, plus paying for his engineer. And that happened a couple of times. And I've been to another meeting when someone wanted to change the size of a doorway in the apartment above their garage or building for their daughter, because their daughter was like 6'2", and they said, no, you can't do that. You can't make those changes. You've got to redesign your whole thing and come back. And it seems to me that you may own your property theoretically, but you're paying rent to the town forever in taxes, and they're telling you what you can and cannot do with it. And it seems like it's, the whole zoning laws are just way more complicated than they need to be, so no one can understand it. It's time to make it more simple, so we can do what we want with our own property, as long as it's not adversely affecting someone next to us. And remember that woman who was trying to get the apartment for their garage, above their garage for their daughter, like, that's not affecting anyone. It's their property. They're not renting it out to non-family members. And it's just, I found the whole situation of going to the meetings very, very frustrating.
Was that Development Review Board meetings?
I don't know which.
It probably was, with the issues you're talking about.
It was the DRB.
Pardon?
It wasn't the Planning Commission, it was the DRB where they didn't have it for them. And that was 200 years ago.
Some more comments? Or concerns?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. Thank you all for coming. See you tomorrow at the ballot, for the ballot vote.